I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Fathers, we gather together as the Fannie County Commission, we ask your blessings upon this meeting, and just the wisdoms we need to make good decisions. Fathers, we gather together as the Fannie County Commission, we want to thank you for the tremendous work this region has received, what a blessing we need to continue to ask good decisions for. Fathers, we gather together as the Fannie County Commission, we ask you for the tremendous work this region has received, what a blessing we need to continue to ask good decisions for. Fathers, we gather together as the Fannie County Commission, we ask you for the tremendous work this region has received, what a blessing we need to continue to ask good decisions for.
The consent agenda is the next thing on the work to be done today.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd offer a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second? Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, is there any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now's our time for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission on public comment? Hearing none, we will then move to the business items. And first item on the agenda is enhancing electronic health records. Shruti? Good morning. Please let the audience know, they should know who you are by now.
Good morning. I'm Shruti Chawla. I'm the director at the Fannie County Health Department. And today, I have two agreements before you. One of them is to enhance the capability of the EHR that we already have, that's Patagonia. So we want to add the K H E L, the Kansas Laboratories Software Interface to it, and that would incur a recurring cost to the county. The second one is a grant agreement from WSU, and that is KDHE is working with WSU and electronic health records companies, including Patagonia, to help develop these interfaces. And so we would be getting $5,000 under that to offset the costs that we incur to a certain degree. The, by working on the project as a pilot, we would be producing documents and we would be creating, helping create the interface that will help other local health departments as well.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? The items before the commission is to sign the notice and waiver. I believe that that is included in the consent agenda. So I'll move on then to the contracts.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that, I would move that we approve the two contracts that Shruti has presented to us and authorize you to sign both of those contracts.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the two contracts that are attached to our packet as set forth in the agenda, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Shruti.
We also have a piece of information for you through KDHE and the Workforce Development Grant. Now we have a person at the Health Department who's available 40 hours a week, and he will be helping us carry out our tasks as we move towards the, as we close up the pandemic-related emergency and close our records and move forward. So I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Well, the next item on our agenda is from Ideatech and a grant letter of support, Doug Peters from IT.
So, they are working on yet another grant. Doug Peters with Fannie County IT. Ideatech is proposing another letter of support for a grant that will cover most of the remaining housing and rural, kind of rural development areas inside of Fannie County. The letter of support states in it that Fannie County is proposing a $35,000 match for this one. And Tim, would you like to add any additional information?
I'm Tim Milford with Ideatech, I was here last month. Tim Milford with Ideatech, I just wanted to point out, this is going to cover an additional 200 premises in rural Fannie County, on top of what the 83 corridor is already going to cover. So every eligible premise that was part of that federal grant should be covered with this particular grant. I don't know if it's, if it's 100%, but it's majority, and we can get, dig in and try to find that percentage if, if needed.
And I do know that there is already some development progress on the Highway 83 corridor. So they are look, do you know how many miles?
Yeah, yeah. There's about 120 miles already been built out on the 83 corridor. 90 of it is in Seward County, and then another 30 is in Haskell County, working north. So that was gone into agreement in May, so legally we have to have it done by May of 2025. So we're on course, we're going to hit that goal and that deadline.
Any more questions about the two grants or any of the other action?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And certainly I'm supportive of us providing this match, and appreciate what Ideatech's done, and their performance has been very good. But my question is, is, this is a grant application, so do we know what our chances are for this particular grant to be funded? And, or are we in a, in a pot with a whole bunch of applicants, or?
The last I knew, we were the only ones applying for this particular one. That could have changed since, since I was last told this, but we were the only ones applying, and we feel very confident that we're going to get it.
So it should be pretty certain, yeah?
We think so.
Right. All right, that was the point of my question. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? We'll go over here.
Do you have, when you install these in the rural area, have, you contact the homeowners and say if they're interested in the fiber option? Or do you just install them? How do you proceed on this?
What we do is, we send out a mailer to each and every person that's covered via these premises. So they get a mailer and a mail, and then my team actually will follow up. Once we have it installed, spliced and available, they'll see us in the right of ways, you know, putting everything in. But usually we send out a mailer to whoever's going to be reachable by it, and then we follow that up if we haven't heard from anybody, and try to get them connected.
Is your sign up, what, what percentage of people sign up with you after?
I, I, I'll, I'll search for that number, I'll get it over to Robert so he can share it with you guys, I'll get that percentage.
So you know how many people would?
I, I'm getting quite a few calls in rural Fannie, and now some in Haskell, with some feed yards that have people that live around the feed yards. Some of them have opted to go ahead and get on our wireless in preparation, and then we'll just convert them when that comes. But I don't have a percentage number for you of the ones in their area that sign up. I'll, I'll work and see if I can get that for you.
Now this will all be installed underground, correct?
The majority of it is, yeah, this grant is all underground, yeah, in the rural.
I have two questions for either of you. What's the approximate cost for that farmstead that might get your service as you go by?
The individual premise? It's, it starts at $100 and can go all the way up to $150, and that, that gets you for 100 meg up and down versus the starting plan, and we can go all the way up to two and a half gig up and down.
Because you're kind of the, the only company in town when they go by, there's no, no competition, so.
Yep.
Do you, I've got a third question. Do you fall under the Kansas Corporation Commission type rules?
Yes.
Okay. Then my, my question, reading between the lines, about the $35,000 match, if you're not successful in getting your grant, the 35,000 stays in, in our bank account, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The total of that is a 3.6 million, the total project for this link, which is that lasting infrastructure, how we're connected, is 3.6 million.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Administrator, what's the source of this money for the match grant?
This, like a previous grant match, will come from your recovery money, ARPA money?
ARPA, correct. Very good. Any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize you to sign the, as chair, to sign the letter of support and provide the match of 35,000 from ARPA funds.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to sign the letter in support of the $35,000 match. Source of the funds is from the ARPA fund. Any further discussion amongst the commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll get that done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matter left is the audit presentation. Teresa and Kristen, please announce yourselves for the public. And on behalf of the commission, we're grateful for your work and your report, and look forward to your presentation. And Teresa and Kristen, you have the floor.
Good morning. I am Teresa Dazenbrock. With me, Kristen Sekovac. She'll be presenting part of it here in a little bit, so, and hopefully keep me out of trouble here with anything. You had the slideshow in your packet, along with, I believe you all received a copy of the bound audit report, so hopefully if you have any questions, we can help answer those today. Just briefly, the audit report itself is on page one through three. It is what we consider an unmodified audit report on the regulatory basis of accounting that the county reports under. You might read that report at some point, because it does pretty well lay out what, what we do as auditors, what our responsibilities are, how our opinions are laid out, but also defines in there some issues that are management's responsibilities for their financial statements, so. There are also two additional reports towards the back of the bound reports, pages 105 and 107. These are in relation to your federal grant programs, and we'll let you know that there were no federal grant findings, no question costs on those programs, so, so that was On pages six and seven in the bound report is statement number one, which is really a snapshot picture of all of the county's funds and operations for 2022. When the state's reviewing audit reports, they look at that statement to see if you're in compliance with the cash basis law. If you want to back up. In total, the, the county's unencumbered cash at 1231 2022 was about 50.7 million. That was an increase overall of about 8.4 million for the year, with about 1.8 million of that increase being in the general fund. Other funds that experienced increases in 2022, you saw an additional 2.4 million increase in your COVID grant fund, as, as you had the additional funding come in for the year, and your project hadn't yet gotten completely underway. Employee benefit fund was up 2.8 million. The equipment and special equipment reserve funds were up about 1.7 million. And then capital improvement and infrastructure improvement funds were up about 1.8 million. And some of those increases in those reserve funds are a result of delays that have occurred with sources to meet the needs for the equipment purchases and such. So those equipments are still sitting there for future acquisitions. Looking in, in total, at your unencumbered cash balances, then across all the funds over a 10-year period, you can see, in this 10-year period, we've increased about 17.4 million from 2013 to 2022. And about half of that increase occurred here in 2022 itself. A large part of that was because of additional ARPA grant money, which we had a $6 million balance in that fund, and then the employee benefit fund sitting at 8.6 million. The, the trend, the, the trend line is on there for you. You can see the last couple of years, we've actually exceeded the, the trend line for reserves and operating cash balances. The composition of those cash balances, when we split it up by type, considering operating funds, reserve funds, and your restricted funds, you can kind of see what the trend has been in each of those categories. When we talk about restricted funds, we're usually considering those to be your grant funds, or funds that are restricted by statute to specific uses. And that's that red line on the bottom. And you can see the last two or three years, it has grown quite a bit. That's with the ARPA money going into there, and started actually in 2020 with the Spark money going in there. The blue line in the middle is the reserve funds. You can see it's been up and down. The most recent three years, we've seen increases. Like I said, as, as equipment has been delayed in acquisition, those reserves have built up for those costs. And then the, the green bar at the top is your operating funds. You can see it's, it has increased in the last few years. Some of that increase is due in part to the impact of the tax, tax lid as you were adjusting and positioning yourself for future budgets. Been looking a little further at the operating funds themselves, the receipts and expenditures, there's a couple different perspectives on this graph. The bottom two lines are the actual receipts and expenditures, and then the top two are what they would be inflated for inflation over time. You can see the receipts, the blue line in the middle there, on average, it's averaged about 35 million per year over this 10-year period, whereas the expenditures over the same 10-year period have averaged about 33 and a half million. Well below, though, the current, current years are well below where they would be if we had tried to keep pace with inflation in this time period, which, those are the top two bars. So expanding a little further on just the receipts and your operating funds, this is the makeup of all of those here for the county. The largest piece of the pie is the general fund, the purple piece towards the bottom. This year, it was just under 10 million, which is very comparable to the prior year, actually down just a little bit. The second largest piece is the pink, county employee benefits. It was up to about 19% of the total this year, compared to about 10% in the previous year. That's in part as the county finished the process of moving the employee benefit accounting all back into its own separate fund. During the tax lid years, they had put those expenses and receipts into the various departments. The law enforcement, the blue part, the blue piece of the pie at the top, is the third largest section of the county. This year, it was about 7.2 million, almost 18%. That is down, though, from 11 million the previous year, and when it was about 27% of the total. That's changes in operations, and then a large part of it would, of course, be due to moving employee benefits, because the sheriff's department and the jail are so And then the fourth piece, largest piece of the pie, is your public works. It was about 4.4 million this year, or 11% down just a little bit from 4.9 million the previous year. When we compare receipts overall for just the general and the law enforcement funds, and we pick those two funds just because we've always done the general, and in 2017, when the tax lid went into effect, the law enforcement fund was established because it was outside of the tax lid. So in 17, the sheriff's fund moved out, and then in 18, the county attorney's office moved out into the law enforcement fund instead of being within the general fund. But you can see the trend overall with the receipts in total. 2022, the receipts you'll see are actually down quite a bit there. The general fund makes up about 58% of that total, and the law enforcement fund about Now, the receipts within the general fund for 2022, as a percentage, taxes, of course, remain the largest part. This year, that was an increase from 76% to 82% of the total. The other one that saw a significant change percentage-wise would be the miscellaneous other. We were down from 13% to 7%. Most of the others aren't large dollars. Because that tax piece of the pie is so large, we've broken it out for you on the next graph, the makeup of the taxes. This year, about 46% of every dollar coming into the general fund's taxes was from the ad valorem property taxes. That's down from 52% the previous year, and it actually been about 56.5% even in 2020. Local sales tax, then, is what's making up that difference. This past year, 2022, we were at about 38% of the total, compared to 33% in 2021, and 31.5% in 2020. So, so some of the details, then, going into the, the dollars that are coming in for that ad valorem tax, we'll look at here on the next few graphs. It's timely as you get into your budget process also. Valuation is one of the key components, and we have here your valuation comparison over the last 10 years. On average, it's averaged 489.4 million in this 10-year period. You can see here in 2022, valuation saw a substantial increase. The trend line is on there, and it, it looks fairly flat, slightly increasing, just because of the big ups and downs the county has had to deal with in establishing its mill levy over the years. Breaking that valuation down a little further for you, you can see by property type where those changes have been, and it's nice to see the real estate has experienced a nice steady increase over time. It's the oil and gas, the black part of the graph, where we've, we've seen the big changes. It has improved here in 2022, but still not to the level it was in 2013, 14, and 15, so. The other component, then, of those tax dollars is the mill levy that's applied to that assessed valuation. And here's the mill levy in total for the county over the past 10 years. We've gone from a low in 2013 of just over 37 mills, to a high of just under 50 mills here for 2022, so about a 12.8 mil spread in that time period. 10-year average is just over 44 mills. The increase that you see there in 2018 was when the tax lid first was going into place, and the county was positioning itself to set the levy where they could have, hopefully avoid having to have any tax lid elections. In the process, they used up some reserves in those years. Dollar-wise, then, the tax receipts over the 10-year period. In 2013, we, we brought in about 18.5 million in tax receipts, compared to 2022's 24.1 million. That's an average of 21.3 million a year over the 10-year period, an increase overall from 2013 to 2022 of about 5.6 million, about 30% increase. So that's, that's the ad valorem tax portion of that pie increase. The sales tax receipts is the other large portion, and we have here for you the 10-year trend on it. You can see the trend has just been a steady increase. It is nice to see the last couple of years that the actual receipts have exceeded the trend line. Some of that may be as individuals are making larger purchases coming out of COVID, and some of the supply-demand has started to catch up, and, and are able to make those vehicle purchases and stuff. And since we were talking about tax receipts, ad valorem taxes, and you're in your budget process, we always try to give you some history of the related counties or surrounding counties that we usually compare ourselves to. Population-wise, there hasn't been much change in, in the population of the, the six counties presented here. Reno County does remain the largest, but the others are all pretty much in line there. Valuation-wise, Reno County, again, is still the largest. You can move it up one, please?
Eight, seven.
The other way, the other way. 17, there you go. Fannie County's there in the middle. You can kind of see the valuation, the counties that experience more changes with oil and gas show up a little more forward, and. And Reno probably have fewer changes resulting from oil and gas valuation changes. Total levy, then, though, for those counties from 2013 to 2022. In 2013, Ford County was the highest of the counties. In 2022, it's Finney County. Now, the spread, the lowest to the highest in 2022, it's a spread of about twelve point three mills between them. The highest is Finney County at the forty-nine, about forty-nine point nine mills. The lowest levy was Ellis County at about thirty-seven point six mills. Now, this is just the county itself. When you look at those mill levies and you're comparing them for a taxpayer to get it more apples to apples, because every county and its taxing entities operate a little different from county to county. But by the time you combine all of them into one tax bill for the taxpayer, it's more comparable. So looking at the graph on page nineteen, we've got the total mills levied in a city for all of its taxing units and comparing that over the ten years for each of these counties, each of these cities and counties. In 2022, Liberal is the highest at a hundred and eighty-three point three mills. It's nice to see, although Finney County was the highest for the county for the entire taxing units, we're actually the second to the lowest at a hundred and sixty-five point four mills.
We're also the lowest because Hayes doesn't have a community college.
That's correct. All of them except Hayes have the community college. And on average, the community colleges' levies are usually about twenty-nine mills. Garden City's community college actually is about twenty-five and a half mills. Comparing to our closest neighbors, Dodd City, they're at a hundred and eighty-one mills. So we've got about a fifteen point six-mill difference with them. Liberal, like I said, was at a hundred and eighty-three point three, so about a seventeen point nine-mill difference with them. So switching gears now and taking a brief look at the expenditures. General and law enforcement funds from 2013 to 2022, there's been a slight increase in recent years. Twenty-twenty-two being down, though, because of the employee benefit fund being moved out. So those interim years, 2018 through 2021, when the tax lid was in effect, employee benefits were in these individual funds, made the numbers higher than they'd been in the previous years. And then here again in 2022. Overall, the general fund's about fifty-two percent, law enforcement's forty-eight percent. Splitting that, about ten percent is attributable to the county attorney's operations for that department and thirty-seven point four percent for the sheriff and the jail's department. Expenditures in just the general fund for 2022. General government is the largest part of that. It's at sixty-eight percent this year compared to sixty-three percent the previous year, down, though, from seventy-two percent in 2020. The transfers out, the green part of the pie, that does make those percentages swing a little as you make more transfers. It impacts the other percentages. This year, we were at nineteen percent. The prior year, we were at twenty-five percent. Health and sanitation's pretty consistent at two percent. Public safety, which is now just the district court, and the Twenty-Fifth Judicial District and CASA remain in there at around eleven to ten percent on average. The law enforcement fund, this is actually broken out. If you're in your audit report at some point, it's on page fifty-six. But the sheriff's department makes up seventy-eight percent of the total compared to seventy-nine percent in the previous year. Dollar-wise, they're about five point nine million compared to the prior year when they were at eight point six million in expenditures. The county attorney's office here in 2022 was twenty-one percent of the operations with expenditures of about one point six million compared to two million in 2021. And then they occasionally have some small transfers as they have equipment that didn't get purchased and they have budget authority that they go ahead and put into reserve funds. The last slide that deals with the numbers in the audit report, on slide twenty-three, deals with the county's outstanding debt at twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Details for that are in your audit report in the footnotes on pages seventeen and eighteen. General obligation bonds, the county had six hundred and forty thousand outstanding at the end of the year. It has a twenty-year maturity for the Sur District number three bond.
Also on that financial leases, that's primarily just one.
Yes, there's about four point nine in finance leases, but that's four leases. The largest, though, is the HVAC system, and it's four point six million. And that matures here in ten years in 2032. In total, long-term debt for the county between those two was just over five point five million. Now, I think Larry raised the question a year ago, so I made note for you. Per capita, for Finney County, the League of Municipalities is showing that that works out to a hundred and fifty-six dollars per capita.
How's that compared to other counties? You know, I looked for the chart comparing.
Ford County was about two hundred and forty-seven dollars per capita, so one point four times higher. Seward County was eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. So they were three times as much as we are here in Finney County. Comparatively, Ellis, then, was two eighty-eight. Reno was two sixty-six. So we are the lowest of the group. So that is the numbers out of the audit report. I'm going to let Kristin talk for a couple of minutes and run through the letter to the governing body for you and mention briefly the management letter before we wrap up for you. So thank you.
Okay, these will be the two loose letters that you have included with your financial statement. And the first letter will be the letter to the governing body. This letter hasn't changed from the past, no changes from last year's letter. But it goes through what our responsibility in auditing is versus your responsibility in management. We also point out the significant risks that are identified by auditing standards that we're aware of during the audit process. We let you know there were no changes to your accounting policies during the year. Because your financial statement does involve estimates, we let you know the most significant one would be the estimate of accounts payable. And then also financial statement disclosures, because those can involve judgment, we let you know that the most sensitive one would be the compliance with Kansas statutes. We also let you know there were no difficulties during the audit process, no disagreements with management. And then attached to this letter will be a copy of any corrected journal entries that we made during the audit process, as well as uncorrected misstatements. And those usually are uncorrected just due to the fact that they're a small dollar amount, or they correct themselves with timing. And then also attached to this letter will be the management representation letter, which was signed by management. And then we let you know there were no, we weren't aware of any consultations with other accountants or no other significant issues during the audit process that we need to make you aware of. The second letter that you have provided is the management letter. The first page would be the cover letter, goes into a definition of what a deficiency would be in internal control, what a material weakness would be. Like Teresa said, we're not going to go through the letter in detail today as we went through all the comments in detail with staff during the audit process. And then we've also went over the letter in detail with the audit committee last week, as well as we're going to go to a department head meeting next week and go through all the comments. However, to let you know, we did have a material weakness this year over the journal entry process. And there were also a couple immaterial violations with Kansas statutes. And then the rest of the letter were just best-practice suggestions, recommendations, things that we want to make you aware of, so hopefully they don't arise to the level of a material weakness in the future. And then the last couple of pages of that letter are actually resolutions from last year's comments. So there were two pages of comments that were resolved from last year's letter. So if you have any specific questions on either one of the letters as you've reviewed it, we can try to answer them now. Or you can feel free to call our office at any time. Teresa and I can go over them.
Well, I think from the commission's perspective, your one finding on page three of the management letter as addressed during our audit committee meeting was this twenty-two dash one fund finding is easily corrected.
Yes, I think so.
Correct. Yes, it's just the journal entry process. I think it's just a reminder that after journal entries are posted, make sure that the financial statement, general ledger, make sure that that's reviewed after the journal entries are posted to make sure that was the true intent of the entry.
And I think in our discussion process to facilitate that, the county was going to consider modifying the form that they use for their journal entries to have that extra sign-off on it, that that step occurs.
Does any of the commission have questions with regard to the discussion, starting on page four of the audit letter?
Can you ask, I need to ask a question, Teresa, on the uncumbered cash balances that you go. I'm sure there's somewhere in there that shows, how much of that, the eight point three, is ARPA?
The ARPA funds, if you look at page six, I think six and seven of your audit report, the ARPA funds are actually just short of six million dollars in the funds.
I remember years ago, we used to always talk about having a certain percentage of the budget in the uncumbered cash reserves. Is that still, where's the desirable percentage?
The Government Finance Officers Association and some of the national standards that they put out would suggest that you, for ease of operation, you want to have in the range of twenty to thirty, thirty-five percent in your operating funds because you don't have the ability to go out and get a line of credit if you need something and you've got timing differences in when your major tax monies come in. Looking at your general fund, at the end of 2022, you were very healthy there. You should have a fairly easy budget process. I think the administration's got plans in place for use of monies and some long-term plans. But at the end of 2022, you were at about ninety-eight percent of your annual expenditures sitting in your general fund cash balance.
Thank you. Other questions from the commissioners?
I think that's all we had. We appreciate the assistance we received throughout the audit process. It's rather lengthy, I know. We start the process in about October and finish it up here in April, May. We appreciate the assistance we get from all the staff here at the county in that process and you yourselves, because we reach out to one or two of you throughout the audit process also with inquiries. Feel free, if you do have questions as you're looking through the report later and see something that you wonder about, feel free to reach out to myself or Kristin. We're happy to try and answer those questions for you.
Thank you very much for your audit and letter and presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a presentation by Jenny Newberry, our Assistant County Administrator, on the 2024 budget goals and a review of the 2023 budget goals.
Good morning. Basically, what you have on this sheet is a summary of the work sessions that we did between commission and department heads. That tally from the second work session is just the number of times that each one of those items was mentioned. So just throughout the entire conversation between different departments, that's the number of departments that brought up those specific items. Last year, you all gave us a four priorities that you wished for us to consider when working on the budget document. They were wages or the employees and then capital. Is it on there?
It's on page three of the minutes. It was, number one, people and wages, two, facility and equipment maintenance, three, consistency in property tax, and four, utilization of one-time funding.
Yes. And so those were the things that we worked on last year. In the audit, you can tell that we had a lot of projects that we worked on, but we could not purchase things. So we do have run over things that we will be working on this year in twenty-three. But we are looking for you all to give us direction in where you would like us to go in twenty-four.
Thank you, Jenny. Discussion amongst the commissioners on budgeting priorities for 2024. Well, everybody jumped off the page on that one. You guys elected me chairman, so here it goes. I think that the priorities for 2024 budgeting is our people are still materially important to what we do, and we have to work on retention, which includes wages. But I think that we also have to have some benefit review. It won't be long before we have some numbers as to what the cost of insurance increases will be before we can do that. But I think people slash retention is a budget priority. I think we've all discussed that many times. Two is, is that if you look at the list that Jenny prepared for us, is that we had some really tough issues with regard to building improvements or maintenance. And I'm sure that staff and guests are going to talk today when we get to those reports about the law enforcement center. The law enforcement center alone is not the only priority. We have a pending report coming to the county in Hunden as to a county-wide assessment on buildings. So buildings is an important issue. For me, consistency in tax, property tax, is last year's goal. This year, we'll be finding a way for the commission to cut the mill levy in recognition of the increased assessment, dramatic increased assessment to the taxpayers. Item four is something that we have to do from last year's budgeting priority, which is to make those designations of the ARPA funds. I think, Jenny, is all the Spark funds done?
Yes.
So all we're talking about is making sure that we have complied with the requirements of designating the funding on the remaining amounts in the ARPA fund. And do you have a timeline of when do we have to have that done?
Is that June of twenty-four?
Well, there's some other things on this list that are critically important to our community and probably more critically important to particular departments or elected officials. But I think the internship program is going to be something that we're going to have to make allowances for in budgeting so that we can better understand the ability to retain. to retain the people that are needing internships and us needing internships to get professionals back to our community. But at the same time, we also need, as we funded last session, the workforce solutions project. So those things, perhaps for twenty twenty-four bud- budgeting, we have some footnotes on, but the top three or four just haven't changed greatly. And we had two really in-depth sessions with all the heads and elected officials putting this list together. And I've spoken for a great deal of time. But I, I don't think that we can make a countywide policy on schedules. There's still going to have to be left to the department heads and the administration to work out. And I, I know that that was the number one discussed item, but I don't think it's the number one priority.
Right. Yep.
Do you see it differently?
No, no.
Other commissioners, please.
Uh, on the internships, um, we have open positions that, you know, we budget for, so those funds could still be used for the interns, couldn't they?
Mr. Chairman, I absolutely agree that the number one priority is the people, that we still need to, uh, we need to assess whether we have the right number of people, whether we have the right people in the right places. And when I say we, uh, the administration and so forth, but we, through the funding mechanism, uh, provide our assistance from this table. So I, I still believe that's, uh, the number one priority. The others, and it kind of, uh, kind of aligns with things that you've already mentioned. And I don't know where these would fall as far as a rank, one through five or things like that. But uh, the master plan for the fairgrounds, we've talked about, uh, with regard to the Hunden study that we should be getting back this summer and see where that leads us. But to me, that's something that we've talked about quite often and, and we need to proceed on. Uh, and that includes the parking area. We've talked in the past about, should we abandon the west part of that parking lot and so forth? But I think that'll show up in that master plan. Infrastructure, which I believe is the sewer, uh, roads, all that, uh, is an important part of our mission and our, uh, mandates that we have from the state with regard to, um, the six mandates that, that the county government has. The capital product, projects, which you've already mentioned, and we do have, uh, the law enforcement center that, uh, and the EMS building, which is, and health building, which is already, funds are, are already set aside, are being set aside, uh, for that. But those are two that come to my mind, but capital projects. And then the, yes, the ARPA, uh, we do need to designate those funds because in the bill that was passed last week in, uh, in the, uh, at the federal level, uh, there'll be a clawback with regard to unused COVID funds if, if we haven't designated those. So, uh, that's going to be an important thing and, and need to be done, uh, in twenty twenty-four for sure. And then, uh, certainly, uh, taking a look at mill levy and dollars raised by the mill levy based on our, our revenue neutral rule that's still in place, uh, budget, uh, obviously is a key ingredient to, uh, what we're tasked to do, uh, here at this board. So I don't know where those would rank as far as getting one done over another. Uh, but again, uh, people surfaces to the top for me.
Other comments?
I don't believe I need to add a whole lot to repeat what you two, uh, have preceded me in this. Uh, I'm looking at this, uh, infrastructure urgent repairs deal. I'm going down to road improvements. I'm not sure we need to designate these roads in particular. I, I think, uh, Public Works knows better than we do which roads are more important that needs to be taken care of. And I, I know for a fact, Curtis has identified several roads that, uh, he's picked out that needs to be addressed first. Uh, so I, you know, I, I'd almost be willing to scratch the road improvements off of our list and, uh, leave that up to management. Other than that, I, I second all you guys' opinions on employer, employees, uh, that development and have no, no additional comments on that.
My sentiments echo what I've heard. Our employees are, are probably one of the most important things that we can consider in our budget and how to fill the, the vacant spots, how to retain, how to, to have a workforce that's happy to come to work. Uh, that said, on the other hand, uh, as a fixed income taxpayer, uh, we, we, we need to take a very careful look at what we're doing to the, to the property tax, uh, that's being levied against our, uh, I say against, that's probably the wrong way to point it out. But, but, uh, our property tax with assessed values going up needs to somehow, uh, be adjusted by, as you suggest, by the mill levy. So I'll be, uh, encouraging that. In the building front, there are two, two buildings, there are two, uh, structures that, that come to my mind that need some attention quickly. One of them's across the street. We've kicked the can and kicked the can until that can is pretty dented up about how to, to, uh, fix the problems at the, uh, at the law enforcement center. We have some other buildings in pretty poor repair, too. Uh, the senior center building, but that's not ours. However, are, are we going to worry about how do they repair it or replace it? Uh, the library has some issues in the walls. Uh, those are being repaired. But, uh, uh, above all, I think we sold, uh, a group of taxpayers, uh, on the idea of a, of a building for EMS and for our health department at Eighth and Mary. Uh, and we've, we've got a nice looking lot there that, that they're mowing that needs a building on it. And I don't know how we're moving toward that building, but, but movement, uh, to me is important. So those are my, uh, my statements regarding the next budget.
If I, if I may, I, there, we ran into some obstacles with the rezoning over there. So we, that process has been stalled, but it is moving forward. Um, I believe that the end of May, there was a hearing on, um, the right of way on a road that was platted and it was, um, dissolved. So it will be moving forward shortly on the plating of that. So it was, it was all the, out of our control.
Jenny brings up something, Mr. Chairman, it's not budget related directly, but it is indirectly. And that's, uh, if I could be a little, um, critical of, of our system, things go on in government that the, that the county commission's not aware of until we get together and am eating, uh, things, what you just mentioned. That would, you know, that kind of information would be nice to kind of know if there was some way a newsletter or a email or something that could go out to, to keep us up to speed on what's taking place in, uh, in, in various projects. So, uh, we, we'll ask for something to be checked into and then never hear the results, so.
Mackenzie has been updating on that in her, um, development update. There was, that was, that has happened between our last two meetings.
Right. Yeah. So we'll give you, uh, a forgiveness for, for that. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One more comment. I agree with Dave on the, on the, uh, you know, we, we forget our number one customer is our taxpayers. And, and they are increasingly being asked to donate more and more money to government. And so, and the state, in their infinite wisdom, this year didn't give much tax relief to the taxpayers. So I think it kind of falls on us to do something about doing something on the mill levy and getting it down some. Uh, because that, if we don't, we're going to hear a lot.
I don't think that we're going to be able to hammer out all of the things that are our priorities, but I think that it, you know, formally, we believe that retaining our county employees and providing a good work environment is the top of the list. But I also think that, um, taking care of our buildings that we have, constructing the ones for which the taxpayers have approved and are paying the tax for, being the EMS and health department facility, is a priority. And, uh, lowering taxes, uh, is going to be a priority for budgeting. And compliance with ARPA, I believe that management will get us, uh, to that timely decision-making process. We don't have much of that ARPA money that's not yet designated.
We do not.
That's in a wonderful position. Commissioner Driz, I believe that economic development is a great priority in this community and that road development is part of economic development and those, uh, the, the construction of those roads and the designation of construction of those roads is a priority. Uh, and how we get there is for the commission to hammer that.
To your point, I'm not saying not development roads, I'm just saying it's not us to us to pick out which roads. We need counsel from economic development to do so. Because what we may think is an important road is not necessarily the roads that need to be, to be developed.
I think economic development will keep us up to date on what roads they need assistance on development. So with that being said, does that give you the four or five bullet points that you need in meeting with the county heads and electeds in formation of budget for twenty twenty-four?
I believe so. Not terribly different from last year, other than looking at reducing the, the tax dollars.
Well, I, I think that it's going to be hard to sell that to department heads and elected officials, but that's the direction we're going. And so I think that one of the things that would help during that process, and I know that, uh, both you and Robert are keenly aware of it, but we've got a lot of unfilled positions that have been unfilled for a substantial period of time. Can we eliminate the unfilled positions, uh, redirect within those budgets to assist with the priority of helping with retention and then also assist the taxpayer in seeing some mill levy reductions? Especially when we, uh, discuss today, you know, that we have an overall increase of county funds, increase of eight point three million dollars, of which three point five of it is ARPA. But that still leaves four point nine million of, of general fund increases, uh, in twenty twenty-three. And that's, that's good management, but we're not a bank and the taxpayers, uh, don't really need us to be collecting their money and not, um, making it a balanced budget.
Right. Robert has been working on a five-year plan and with the COVID and not being able to get some of that, a lot of that was accelerated last year. And so that, we, we probably have, um, exceeded where we intended to be on fund balances.
That's wonderful. Uh, this is the first year in a long time that fund balances have been worth anything. And, uh, as the treasurer noted during our audit meeting, uh, revenue from our fund balances has been increased greatly. And kudos, uh, here's acknowledgement to the treasurer in case she's watching. I don't see that she's here. Uh, she's gone to a great deal of work and working with the financial institutions so that the county is adequately rewarded for the funds that we have in cash balances. But I think that also in the future, a responsibility to the taxpayers is to, uh, have adequate reserves, but at the same time, not be banking their money. It's not our money, it's theirs. Other comments from the commissioners before we move on?
Other than the, the comment on the debt load, um, I think, you know, kudos to not only our staff, everybody involved, that, uh, you know, when you compare to our, our peer counties, we were considerably under them and that's a good position to be in. I think that's something we need to remember and keep in mind.
With that, Jenny, do you have any other comments?
I do not. Thank you very much.
I look forward to your priorities. Okay. Now we're going to take about a seven or eight minute break and we will reconvene at nine forty. Does that work? Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. In your packet you have the updates for Country Acres, Randall Estates and WKC. There aren't any updates for those, but I do have some other updates related to other matters that we've, we've discussed in the past. The first is the storage container amendment. That went to the Planning Commission on May 19th. And the Planning Commission did deny the proposed changes that were brought to the board. They instead directed staff to take a more comprehensive look at the, how it relates to the regulations as a whole. And so Neighborhood Development Services staff will be looking at and working with us how we want to address some of these issues within the county. So you'll be seeing that in the future soon. I also wanted to let you know that we have been getting a lot of, or interest in a couple of different new developments that you'll probably see coming up here soon that we can't really talk about yet, but I wanted to let you know that those will be coming up soon.
Just a quick question. You meaning, are you meaning housing developments or commercial or?
A combination of both. Yep. And then since Commissioner Jones did bring up the health department and EMS facility, we are in the process of having that plot being done. We've hired a surveyor to survey that whole property and make it instead of, I think it's like six or seven properties right now into one property. And so when that goes before the Planning Commission, we'll also do the rezoning at the same time. And then there's nothing standing in the way of that portion.
And as I understood it, the delay was because we had to.
Yes. Yep. So. Yep. So, and that's all I have for you this morning unless you have questions for me. Okay. Thank you.
I don't want to deprive her of this opportunity.
I attended one outside meeting for the early learning childhood board meeting and otherwise we have been working internally on department budget meetings. We have a number of them scheduled this week and we should be done internally. So we're moving right along with that and anticipating that we will have fairly complete budget to submit or to work through with you all on July 3rd. There will be a work session on the 3rd for, to go through the budget. Yes. That is correct. That will probably depend on how long that, the regular session ends up being. Probably so. Lunch depending on how, how long the regular session meeting goes. Don't we usually just go?
Yes, that's correct. We'll plan on.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would ask, just as one of five, that we continue as quickly as possible that day. I'm due to leave that afternoon and so, because I didn't realize we were going to do the budget thing that quickly. So if we can continue right on.
Yep, we can do that. Mm-hmm.
I'm supposed to leave by about two o'clock that day.
We'll, we'll know, we'll know when we do our agenda setting meeting whether we're planning on running that long and we will plan accordingly. Okay. Yes. Mm-hmm.
We have our four or five goals.
Yes, we do.
Anything else?
Not for me unless you all have something.
A couple of other additions to that. I know that Jenny and I have been working as well as with the rest of the fiscal committee on, on the entire budget. Go ahead, hear you, Robert. Oh, I'm sorry. Last week we did meet, I believe it was Friday, and this is probably part of Larry's update as well. With juvenile detention, she presented the budget. It was voted upon with that board to send it forward. Had about a 7% increase, which is about $95,000. The county's portion of that is about, you'll see about a $15,000 increase on what we contribute to the JDC on that one. We also had a meeting last week on health insurance, just a monthly meeting. But in that meeting, they also shared that they should have, by the end of this week or next week, from Blue Cross, what the anticipated rate increase for renewal will be. That's something we're going to have to grapple with. I think right now they're anticipating not quite as much as last year, but it still will be somewhere around that $1.1 million. So we do need to kind of think through that. And as, as the four of you recall, that was part of the plan during the '23 budget process last year was to set it aside to absorb that in the employee benefits fund in case you should, should so choose to stick with this current policy. So I think formally we'll be meeting on that the first part of July, if I remember correctly, with, with the IMA, with your cons, consomes on that. So those are all stay tuned moments. Okay?
The other thing that I have with regard to the administrator's report was we had a meeting over at the LEC that Jenny was not able to attend. Rex was there and we had Dwayne Vaughn, the folks that worked on the facility, as well as Rex, building supervisor. The identified items for necessary corrections, improvements, remodeling, reconstruction, whatever you want to call it to the LEC was discussed. I believe everybody got a separate email on those who were in attendance. It was very well attended by the people that work in the LEC. Then we had Bob Kreitzer's help because he's worked very closely with Dwayne Vaughn, the mechanical engineer. We need to really address what the needs are and make a report to the commission based on his detailed letter to us. I believe that was shared with each of the commissioners. And I can't speak for Robert and Jenny, but as to the process, but we need to move that process forward in the coming meetings as to what we're going to do with the LEC and how we're going to get it done. And obviously, it's not cheap for anybody who's listening and for all of us here seated. We're going to have a sticker shock when we get it. People, folks, construction costs are way up. Nobody has to sit here and, and guess that it's going to be very expensive. But the method by which we get it done and the planning of how we get that done, need considerable help from the administrator's office to get in the middle of that project. And let's get going. A good meeting. If you don't mind, I, Bob, do you have anything that you would like to say about the, the meeting to help the commissioners understand what was going on?
Yeah, I think, appreciate it, number one, Bob Kreitzer. The, the input from the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, and every, all of the occupants, like you said, Jerry, was very, very good. And it gets rather extensive. We've always known that we need to replace the mechanical system, certainly in the middle of the building and a lot of the plumbing system. But then there are other problems that came up. And I think what we're finding is if you do look at that quote that he has given to bring in a structural engineer, an architect, electrical engineer, and, and a mechanical plumbing engineer to do the study for those dollars would work very well, coupled with the fact that if you then decide to do a project and they do it, that project fee will be absorbed in the final fee. So I think the numbers are right. And I also think down the road, the construction management, be it Hutton, Lee, Dick, or whomever, you know, you invite that you interview, to do that kind of construction because it's going to be very unique because that building will have to stay occupied 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So the constructability is going to be a big, big factor. I guess the last thing in terms of urgency of time, if you could do something to where this could move along and it could be done in the wintertime, which that building could be done, and keep it out of the summer construction season, I think you would get a lot better participation in terms of bids. So. But the building's over 40 years old and it's time, it's way past time for a lot of things.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you personally for attending the meeting and getting some insight onto the building. Appreciate your help. Jenny, back to you. As far as timeline, I would like to create a timeline of what we're going to try to get done and what we think is reasonable from the administration's point of view as to reviewing the proposal that was made by Mr. Vaughn and how you want to proceed. What do you think each of both the administrator and Jenny who's been filling in as to how that's going to look going forward?
One note on, on that, as you heard through the audit and what you read in your audit document, is that we're required to go out for competitive proposals and bids on these types of services. So even though we can review the information that was presented, to comply with your own policies, you're going to have to do that formally.
Correct. But what's the timeline of, of saying, yes, we're going to do a project and setting it out for construction management if that's the method we're going to go? For instance, can we decide on the 19th of June that we want to proceed with repairs to the LEC and promote a construction management contract? that we want to proceed with repairs to the LEC and promote a construction management contract?
Yes, there's some timing issues on, on, on that process. At a, uh, my assumption, you'll do a CMR, construction management at risk. Um, and then we can, we can take it from that point.
All right. I'll look forward to your recommendations and perhaps being on the budget then on the fifteenth, the nineteenth of June and, and making the LEC the priority that we set for budgeting. Anything else, Jenny?
No.
Commissioners? All right, we'll get back on schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. County councillor report?
I have gotten signed up. The County Councilors Association has their continuing legal education summer seminar, which is on, um, then sixteenth of June. It's going to be a webinar that I'm going to attend, um, for that one. Kind of excited just to have some more additional outside information. As it move forward to be able to continue to learn and grow within this position that I'm now in. Um, I have met with, um, Fire Chief Ursick. Um, and we've started working through what maybe needs to be in some updates to the fireworks, uh, resolutions. And, um, working through that, worked closely with, um, McKenzie and administration, going through all things with our NDS, um, agreement with the, the city and just working through things with that and various contracts, uh, which I believe you'll see some of those on the, the next agenda now that we've been able to work through those with some, um, department heads.
Anything else?
No.
All right, yes.
We have a couple or three legal issues out there hanging in, uh, in the wind. Do we need an executive session for an update some of these days or, or?
There hasn't really been any forward movement to my knowledge at this point in time. I have attempted to reach out and haven't got much of an update. I'll see what I can get before the next meeting and perhaps we can do an executive session and update on those matters.
We'll look forward to doing that on the fifteenth.
Thank you.
Uh, what I do have though for you is, uh, fireworks policy. You know, a month ago, folks, we would have considered a complete and total ban on fireworks. But our creator decided that this country was going to turn green and it did. So, uh, I know it's really not the county councillor's, uh, part, but perhaps we should make a decision what we're doing with regard to fireworks.
I, I believe that Chief Ursick plans to be back at our next meeting. Uh, that's what he had indicated when he was here last time. And then, um, uh, and during our conversations, he's been watching the drought index and just indicating the amount of rainfall that we would need to have and watching the drought index to make sure that, that we're at the appropriate spot. I probably would agree that we've, we've been dumped with water at this point in time. But, um, I know that his plan is to come back and update you with all that at our next meeting, so.
Very efficient prayers from Commissioner Dries. Uh, Jenny, if you would, and Robert, please remind me when we get to planning next week to invite, uh, Chief Ursick over so we can make a decision on the fifteenth for fireworks. All right. Anything else for the legal department? And we'll go right on down the report, uh, to upcoming meetings and Gabby and Dory. Those are in our packets, I believe. Any highlights to upcoming meetings, uh, for any of the commissioners on that part of this?
I have a low light.
A low light?
The, um, library will not have a meeting in July.
Uh, on low lights, Compass will not be having a regular board meeting in June. So, next report from May with regard to any updates in Compass will come in August after the July meeting. We'll start with you over here on my left, Commissioner Jones, for Commissioner Reports, please.
Okay, I don't have much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, did attend the legislative coffee and, uh, the last one for the year. And I also attended the library board meeting, the last one held, and we had the two new board members, um, uh, appear and, uh, uh, had an orientation and, and, and they're off and running. The, uh, I mentioned that building, the, when that was designed, the architect put downspouts from the roof down through the wall to, to drain, uh, rainwater. And those tubes through the wall happened to be out of a metal that rusts, that rusts. And much like my other county buildings, uh, that library building is, I think, thirty-eight years old or so. Uh, a couple of those have rusted out and so we have to tear the sheet rock off the wall inside and they're replacing those with PVC, but, uh, that's kind of an ongoing thing. Uh, the only other thing I want to report is I thought I might have a medical conflict on the nineteenth. I got that meeting on June nineteenth. Got that meeting with the doctor moved to three P M. in the afternoon in Scott City. So, uh, we should be good to go.
Thank you. Question, Dries?
Uh, normal monthly, uh, convention visitors bureau meeting. Nothing out of the ordinary on that pretty standard meeting. Couple of contracts approved and so forth. Great Plains also had a meeting and, uh, development has happened. Uh, the Commerce Department in State has decided to take over one of the major funds that, uh, Great Plains does. It amounts to about forty percent of their annual workload and income as well. So we'll see how that shakes out, but, uh, Great Plains, uh, development could be in, uh, severe financial difficulties very soon, losing all that, uh, income from that. Uh, so that Commerce Department has, uh, decided to do a lot of that in-house. And that's, we'll see how that develops, but it doesn't sound good at this point in time. Other than that, that's it.
Commissioner Jones, are you ready, sir?
Um, yes, um, the, uh, Finney County Committee on Aging, um, didn't have a meeting last month. And, um, I don't know if we got one scheduled again this month. Also, uh, attended the Zoom or participated in the Zoom call that Robert spoke about earlier on JDC. Uh, we'll have a little more information on, um, future updates to the JDC building. We have a meeting scheduled, um, now I'm looking at my calendar, but coming up. And, um, Beth will probably cover that more and tail there. It's, um, demand is increasing for JDC again. I don't know if that's good or bad, but it is. Other than that, um, oh yeah, I attended the fifth, what do you call it, Fifth Monday?
Yes.
With Economic Development, um, to see what new information they have. And if, there again, we talked about roads and, and, um, need to get involved a little more with KDOT and we'll see if we can get a little more info with them on, um, what their future plans are without being surprised so much, you know? We'll see how that goes. Uh, I don't think there's any permanent KDOT person in, speaking of it, there's still an interim. So, you know, that's a problem.
Mr. Pischny?
Uh, just, uh, meeting attendance. I've, uh, trying to keep up with the meetings that I'm assigned to, planning commission, economic development extension, and, uh, met with each of those, but nothing, uh, uh, that's, uh, specific to us that I believe I need to bring to this group today. And, uh, I, uh, the one thing that I would encourage you, uh, I assume each of you is getting the emails weekly from, uh, NACO, uh, with regard to, uh, happenings at the national level with counties. And they had a real nice piece, uh, four or five pages on, uh, summarization of the Fiscal Responsibility Act that was passed by Congress last week that as it relates to counties and some of the things that, uh, we need to be aware of, some of the things that they did not harm us with, uh, with that bill and so forth. So I would urge you to take a look at that, uh, piece if you, uh, have it. And then lastly, I keep track of some of the communities across the state such as Salina or, or Saleen County and Reno County and some of those. And, and it was interesting that one of our former reporters out here, Tim Manrew, did a, a piece on, uh, Salina Post the other day about, uh, childcare in Saleen County and housing and so, and, and it was housing as well, but it, it was focused on childcare. So, uh, we're not unique with regard to housing and childcare is my point.
Well, thank you. The good news from Compass Behavioral Health, or what we all refer to as area mental health, is they did receive their CCHBCC designation. Uh, those acronyms, I've, I've told Lisa many times that, uh, I need help with those. And so she's given me a cheat sheet and I won't try to describe what that is, but it's great for our community. Uh, it will result in them beginning the process of recruiting sixty additional, uh, employees, nearly forty additional therapists and masters level people or above. It is a huge issue for Southwest Kansas. And as we all know, mental health services in Kansas, as we rank nationally, is very poor. But we want to be out front of that here in the counties served by Compass and particularly in Finney County. I'm very proud to be a part of that, uh, board that is guiding that considerable growth in that organization. They also made their presentation here during our hearings that we had on the eighteenth and nineteenth of May. The, uh, fifth meeting, uh, fifth monthly meeting with, uh, Economic Development is very productive and I'll echo what Commissioner Larry Jones said about, uh, our needs as a county. If you go back and look at the picture development east of Garden City right now, it is incredible what is occurring outside the city and in the county. And yet there's no diagram yet to us as to where eighty-three is going to go once the four lane gets to the airport. And common sense seems to indicate that the four lane is going to have to go somewhere across your district. And they don't have a, a set goal yet and they darn sure haven't communicated it to us. And I would sure like, um, the county through administration or us as commissioners to be able to understand what's the plan. And the good news is, is that Ron Hall will get, our district director, KDOT, will get back to work. It's like, uh, some of our, uh, folks here in Finney County. They, he's, uh, had some personal issues that he had to attend to and, and including his own health. And we uplift Ron in our prayers, but it's good news. I spoke to him at church yesterday. He's going to get back to work in July. So, uh, that's wonderful news for us because then we will have somebody local that we can approach to have a better idea where this four lane is going to go. And of course, we continue to have issues with the plan on the eighty-three and the eighty-three corridor, which I want the commission to be more involved in, uh, especially as it relates to Southwind and coming into town. For those people who are listening, we have addressed the issue of rain and the impact that it has on our roads. I know that, uh, the administrator has given it to Curtis and his people at Public Works. What a problem to have. And we'll give thanks that we have those problems and we'll continue to address them in, uh, a timely and reasonable fashion. I think the citizens have been very straightforward. Uh, I'll be looking forward to next month having a report from the administrators on the potential, uh, bridge closing in twenty twenty-four and how that's going to impact our county roads as to what the plan is for how we're going to be able to assist KDOT in that infrastructure improvement here in our town. So, uh, anything else? In summary, administrator, do you have anything else? All right, any other commissioners?
I've got one more thing, Jerry. On, on that Fifth Monday, uh, I thought it was quite interesting when they talked about the agreements or their, their ongoing work with, um, Garden City Junior College and Kansas State and that the dean of engineering and the dean of agriculture were meeting with, um, Dr. Ruda this week, I think, here in Garden.
Correct. And they will be here again on the fifteenth, uh, or nineteenth of June.
So they, um, there's a lot going to happen. I think they're, they're started and they decided, you know, somebody said, we need big ideas. And I think they got presented with some really big ideas. So we'll see if it'll help not only junior college, but help our, our lack of four-year, um, education, higher education in Western Kansas.
Wonderful opportunity. Commissioner Pischny, you had some other remarks.
Yeah, just, um, I, I assume that each of you received the email the, the other day. And not, and not, I'm not saying that we don't need to know about some of these road things that you just addressed sooner than this, but it, the, uh, there are consult meetings for highways and so forth. And I, and I thought I had it on this calendar, but I don't. But I was thinking it was October fourth or fifth or somewhere in that first part of October. Uh, and they're going to be looking for ideas and stuff from us in those consult meetings. So, uh, did, did each of you receive that? I, I got that Thursday or Friday last, uh, that comes to consult meeting.
Well, the four lane is too similar on and they're coming this way and they've surveyed.
October fourth. Yeah, I thought it was October fourth, but I didn't have it on my phone calendar.
Very young, yeah, nine o'clock.
Nine to twelve, I believe it is.
It'd be important for us to be there.
So we need to make sure we're there no matter what happens between now and then.
Curtis, you had a brief comment, sir?
Kurt Logsdon, uh, a minute ago when you had brought up the concern about the, uh, KDOT and communicating on it, on eighty-three, um, I had been in contact with them here recently. They are working up a presentation for you all right now that has to do with the portion of eighty-three project they're getting ready to do, which is around the entrances to Southwind and stuff. And then also on the bike lane issue going underneath the highway that I brought up to you earlier. I, they should get back to me this week. Probably they're going to want to try to set up a meeting, maybe a Zoom meeting next week, if at all possible. Uh, so I, I will stay in contact with Robert on that. And, uh, but that would be a great time for you guys possibly to open up that dialogue as, as far as on the future plans of eighty-three.
Okay, keep that in mind. Appreciate the update. Hearing nothing other than of the regular business of the commission, is there a motion to adjourn?
Hope for that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second, Commissioner Dries?
Oh, second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all.